I'd like to call tonight's meeting to order for the Planning Board. There's two items on tonight's agenda that I'd like to take out of order if I could. Items D and F. I could have a motion on that. Moved in second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Taking Application D. The application of Cicero A. and Ruth Lewis, owner's and changing places LLC applicant, for property located off of Falkland Way wherein final subdivision approval is requested for the creation of an eight lot subdivision ranging in lot size from 10,000 square feet to 27,454 square feet with all of the proposed lots having access off a proposed extension of Crescent Way extending through to Saratoga Way. Said property is lying in a zone where a minimum lot size of 5,000 square feet and 80 feet of continuous street frontage is required. Said property is located in a general residence B district and is shown on assessor plan 212 as Lot 213. The applicant has requested this application to be tabled to the next meeting which is March 16th.
Seconded.
Moved in seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And the Chair votes aye.
Abstain.
Mr. Will has abstained. Moving on to Application F. The application of Thomas J. Flatley, owner and Home Depot applicant for property located at 500 Spalding Turnpike wherein a conditional use permit is requested as allowed in Article 6, Section 10-608B of the zoning ordinance to allow the demolition of the existing building, the construction of a 145,193 square foot retail store and 19,200 square foot pad building and corresponding parking within an inland wetland protection district. Said property is shown on assessor plan 238 as Lot 20 and lies within a general business district. This applicant has also requested that this application be tabled to next month's meeting. Do I have a motion?
Seconded.
Moved in seconded to table. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And the Chair votes aye. Going back to the public hearings. Item B. The application of Wenberry Associates LLC owner for property located at 15 Congress Street and the City of Portsmouth owner for property located at 44 High Street wherein preliminary and final subdivision approval is requested to allow the conveyance of a certain parcel of land from Wenberry Associates LLC to the City of Portsmouth. Said properties are shown on assessor plan 117 as Lot 12 and Lot 16 and lie within a central business B, historic A. and downtown overlay districts. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
I guess it's me.
Mr. Chairman, before we proceed, distance for considering butter is how far?
100 feet.
100 feet?
Yes.
I'm outside that. Outside the 100-foot buffer, are we?
Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Board, we stand before you in an unusual manner representing the city in this particular request. The Planning Board may be familiar with this property. It was subject of a referral from the council several months ago. It is an offer to convey land to the city in order to, basically because there is no need for the land by the present applicant and the land is located adjacent to the high handover parking facility. My understanding is that this particular portion of the land used to be used as a rear access into Newbury's and was used to help turn vehicles around. In the time since Newbury's has closed, it has become a bit of an issue for the present landowner and they have offered to convey it to the city. This board's recommendation was that the city should accept this land and that recommendation was provided to the council. To have that actually take place, the city had to prepare a subdivision plat which is now what is before you and effectively this constitutes a subdivision. The only other issue that is being brought forward at this time is it's also recommended that the butter would relinquish any rights that they might have in the adjacent properties. You may recall that when the high handover expansion was being done, there was a lot of issues with old property rights and how those existed and this is an opportunity to help clear the title. So, the department's recommendation to the board is as you have it, that you should grant preliminary and final subdivision approval subject to the placement of boundary monuments, to that the deed conveying this parcel should relinquish any rights to adjacent parcels so as help clarify remaining title issues, and that you would also recommend to the council that it should authorize the city manager to take whatever steps necessary to secure ownership of this parcel. I would assume that the city in taking over the ownership of this will retain the rights, obviously, for the public, so if there is any additional benefits that might be done in this area, the city would have the land to so do.
Any questions? Yes, Mr. Coker.
I don't really know how to ask this, but I feel it is not this board's purview to recommend to the city council that it should authorize the city manager to take whatever steps necessary to secure ownership of this parcel. I mean, is this being donated to the city or is the city expected to buy this?
It's a donation. It's being provided to the city and in return the city's accepted the cost, excuse me, of preparing the subdivision plat.
I guess I still, I stand with that. I don't think it's this board's purview to authorize or recommend anything. I think the first two take care of whatever, you know, whatever we need to do.
I wouldn't quibble with that because you've already recommended to the city council that acquire the ownership of this land, so three could be superfluous in that sense.
Mr. Will.
Just to clarify, as I understand historically, any property that is purchased or sold by the city goes through this board to be overlooked for things like subdivision or purchase or whether or not it's the best deal for the city to do so. We've always gotten these recommendations and I'm not surprised in any way that we see this before us. As far as the subdivision is concerned, I think it's just one example of how the city also deals with its own site review regulations. Even though it's not, it doesn't have to adhere to them, it still brings it forward to us so it can hash these things out in the same process that other landowners have to go through. That way, part of what Dave was saying, cleaning up the title, is half the battle here, just to have it, you know, so that everything is, like, I's are dotted and all the T's are crossed. That's, I think just going through the process is half the battle here, not so much, you know, should we or shouldn't we be doing this? I think it's very helpful within the process to do it.
Any other questions for the applicant?
State your name for the record.
I don't have, Cindy, you don't have any questions? I don't have any.
Yeah, you do have a public hearing, so.
Any additional questions? No more questions for board? Anybody in the public wish to speak to, for, or against this application? Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Robert Kennedy. I just happen to be the owner of the property Gillies. I don't have any feelings one way or the other on what's going on here, but I just wonder if the members of the board are aware that there are a lot of people who have a right of way on this particular piece of property. And I, other than myself, I know there's two or three others that have a right of way here.
This conveyance wouldn't change any rights that may be in existence.
Okay.
The fee ownership would change.
No, I have that assurance from the city attorney. In fact, I bumped into him today and he said they can't give away what they don't own. I just suspect it's going to get a little bit awkward and it might involve, you know, quite a bit of money from the city.
Now, since anything that's conveying here is not going to affect any of the rights, there's not going to be any change in the situation other than the city will own the fee of the land.
Okay. That's how was me. Thank you very much.
I'm assuming the city attorney's looked at this as well?
Yes.
Okay.
The recommendation and the deed and all the comments have been reviewed by the city attorney.
Okay, thank you. Second time, anybody in the public wish to speak to, for, or against? Third time, seeing no one rise, I'll close the public hearing. Your pleasure, board.
Mr. Chairman, I move for preliminary and final subdivision approval to convey this piece of property to the city.
As presented?
With the stipulations.
Okay.
Second?
Second. Motion's made and been seconded. Any comment on the motion? Hearing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving on to item C. The Portsmouth Planning Board is conducting a public hearing to take public comment on proposed amendments to the city's 1995 zoning ordinance as amended. The amendments include changes to the following sections. Article 1, Section 10-102, definitions by adding certain definitions. Article 2, Section 10-209, Table 5, uses in industrial districts by adding a new use category. Article 3, Section 10-305A, industrial, Table 11, dimensional requirements by changing dimensional requirements. In Article 4, Section 400, supplementary regulations by adding a new section 10-405, standards for drive-through facilities. Copies of the proposed amendments are on file in the Planning Department office and available for public inspection. David, I'll turn this one over to you.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. This arises from the city's and the board's work on the present master plan. One of the recommendations was to take a look at how we handle financial districts and drive-throughs and we retained the city's consultant for the master plan and you've benefited of several work sessions on it. I would at this time ask Mr. Tanner to review the issue in a formal manner so that we can conclude or further this business.
Thank you. My name's Rick Tanner from Tanner &amp; Associates in Newburyport and give this opportunity to make a presentation for your benefit. You've had, as David mentioned, you've had the several opportunities to discuss this and we've refined it, I think the first time was in October and then again in December. Basically, as was mentioned, we were looking at the office research districts. There are six of these spread across the city. We began by looking at the locations, whether they were appropriate, and we made some recommendations that when you do the comprehensive zoning revision that you perhaps consider some changing in zoning for three of those areas and retain three of those areas in the OR district. The primary questions relating to the financial institutions had to do with appropriateness and standards for different types of financial institutions. Key issues being primarily traffic and other impacts associated with drive-through facilities and with high-volume retail uses and the past experience that the city has had with impound lots as accessory uses for financial institutions, basically for repossessed cars, repossessed vehicles. Based on the locations and the desired character of the office research district, it was determined that some types of financial institutions are appropriate and some types aren't. So, the first step was to try to break those up. So, the general approach that we took that's reflected in this recommendation is defining several categories of financial institution and regulating each category separately, reflecting the different impacts that these have, adjusting the dimensional regulations in the OR districts to provide some additional flexibility, and I'll get into that later, and then establishing consistent standards for drive-through uses and regulating them as accessory uses to permitted principal uses, whether they're for financial institutions or for fast food restaurants or pharmacies. We didn't want to just limit it to financial institutions because the same types of impacts apply no matter what the drive-through use is a subsidiary use to. So, just going through the proposal, the first section, Section A, is definitions and that creates a definition of financial institution and then three subcategories. A financial services office which doesn't have high traffic volumes or ATMs. The retail bank which is the customer-oriented with either drive-up teller or walk-in teller services. And automated teller machines which the ordinance proposes to allow only as accessory uses. Also defined impound lot, so we could control that. And then define several terms related to drive-through facility. First, the term drive-through facility itself which wasn't defined and then some of the aspects, a bypass lane, a drive-through lane, a stacking lane, and a stacking space. So, that's, that first section is just getting the definitions out of the way so we can use them later on in the ordinance. The second section, item B, looks at proposed use regulations in the industrial district which is changing the industrial district table. And the proposals here are to allow financial services offices which are the lower traffic volume uses in both the industrial and office research district but not to allow them in the waterfront industrial district. The retail bank use was proposed to be allowed by special use permit in the office research but to be prohibited in the industrial and waterfront industrial. And the impound lot would be restricted to the industrial district and only by special use permit, special exception, excuse me. And then the last aspect of the use regulations was to allow drive-through facilities as an accessory use in the, by special use, by special exception, sorry, in the office research district and to prohibit it in the industrial and waterfront industrial districts. The third section just dealt with three changes to the dimensional regulations for the office research district. One is reducing the minimum lot area from three acres to two acres. One was reducing the minimum lot depth from 300 feet to 200 feet. And the third was reducing the minimum side yard from 75 to 50 feet. And again, this was based on looking at the actual lots in the areas that are proposed to remain as office research districts and considering the actual layout of land uses there. There was also correcting one footnote that was incorrect in the existing ordinance just as a house cleaning item. The longest section of the proposal has to do with standards for drive-through facilities and this would be applying wherever drive-through facilities exist as, again, as accessory uses. First was controlling the size of these facilities, limiting the number of drive-through lanes to two and also limiting the number of lanes to one lane per 5,000 square feet of gross floor area so that the drive-through facility would not dominate the use but would clearly be an accessory use to the principal use. The second, again, was dealing with impacts on surrounding properties by looking at setbacks. First, requiring that the facilities, the windows, speakers, menu boards, whatever, be set back 100 feet from any residential zoning district and 50 feet from any lot line and requiring the drive-through lanes to be set back 50 feet from a residential zoning district and 30 feet from any lot line. And requiring that any menu boards, these lighted boards that, you know, as you come up to a fast food restaurant, be shielded from public streets and from residential properties. Also controlling impacts. Their, item D, addresses light and noise issues, requiring screening to prevent headlights from shining on adjoining properties. One of the things, when we looked at some of these districts, it wasn't a problem necessarily with having a drive-through use in the district itself, but if the district was across the street from a residential area, you wouldn't want to have people sitting at the drive-up window in the evening with their headlights on shining on the residential properties across the street. So, we wanted to control that. And reiterating that sound levels be, adhere to the standards that already exist elsewhere in the zoning ordinance and encouraging use of communication methods that don't use speakers, so try to control some of the sound. In terms of access and circulation, this is trying to promote safety, avoid conflicts, designing stacking lanes to avoid congestion and conflicts with both vehicular and pedestrian circulation, clearly delineating the stacking lanes. Requiring a setback of any intersection between a stacking lane and a pedestrian access to be at least 50 feet from these major locations, entrances and exits and transaction windows. Requiring the stacking lanes to be 10 feet wide and contain room for at least eight cars and requiring a bypass lane so people aren't stuck in the facility waiting for somebody at a transaction window. And then the final element is to require a traffic impact study for any special, for any site plan approval application that contains the drive-through facility and to require a finding by the zoning board of adjustment that level of service and safety won't be impaired by the approval of the granting of the special exception. So, that is, in very brief, the summary of what's before you and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions for Mr. Tanner? Anybody on the board? Thank you, Rick.
I think you got one with Don.
Oh, Mr. Coker.
Sort of a curiosity question. I know we talked about this before. Section 10-505 is virtually unenforceable. Why, and the reason I say that is there's a great deal of experience with the downtown and the noise and, you know, our work over the years as a downtown residents neighborhood association. Why have we included that here if, as a practical matter, 10-505 is basically unenforceable? I'll give you a perfect example. The ambient noise level is higher than the maximum allowable in the noise ordinance given location and time and that sort of thing. So, I guess, is this all we have to work with, so that's why we include?
Yeah, I understand that and I do remember having this discussion. I guess there was just a feeling that we wanted to have something there to, through the site plan and approval process to say noise is a concern and so that you can have that as one of the considerations that you want to encourage the applicant to minimize the amount of noise. It's already in the, as you say, it's already in the ordinance and it may be difficult or impossible to enforce, but just incorporating it here, again, tells the applicant that for this particular use, noise can be an issue, particularly if the facility is next to a residential neighborhood, if it backs up to, then the ambient noise might not be such a problem. You might actually be able to actually deal with the individual impacts of this use if you've got a speaker that's, you know, 100 feet away from a residential zoning district if the office research backs up to a residential use.
Okay.
Doesn't happen very often, but it could.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Hopley?
Rick, I got a question. We're creating or modifying the definition of financial institution to include, in essence, three subcategories.
Yes.
And we're then grasping that and altering Table 5 for uses in the industrial district that would pick up both the primary financial institution and three of its subcategories. And what caught my eye was, you know, Table 5 uses in the industrial district and I thought, well, gee, you'd have financial institutions in another district, let's take business. So, I went to Table 4 and sure enough, item 7 is financial institutions, just plain financial institutions. How do the subcategories now that we're creating them, are they affected in the other districts like the business district? Should we be, i.e., should we be modifying another table too because we've now titrevated with the definition?
Yeah, I think you're right and I think that eventually you'll want to do that. Right now, I think that because there's a, the term financial institution is defined as broadly as it can be.
Right.
Then I would say that anything that falls within that definition, those three subcategories, would then be permitted in the business districts as they are permitted now. But as you go through the comprehensive revision, you may decide that you want to, you know, limit one or the other of these uses.
Well, what I'm thinking right away is, throws a red flag in my mind, is the impound lot. Now, an impound lot might be applicable, might be apropos in an industrial district, but is it apropos in a business district?
It's a good point. Something to look at, very quickly.
Good comment. Excellent comment. Good comment, yeah. Mr. Will.
Perhaps I missed something at the last work session, but I remember one of the discussion topics was around the word feasible under standards for drive-through facilities. As I understood it, we were going to sort of walk away from feasible and sort of introduce the concept of not having speakers that at all at drive-throughs and then if they absolutely need one, we'll put one in? How did we still remain with feasible? I mean, I can understand maybe not going that far, but feasible seems like something way too broad-based. Anybody could argue that, well, it's not feasible for us to have silent, you know, drive-throughs.
Yep.
How did we, maybe it's more of a question for the department, how did we leave that in the discussion?
I was going to say, one of the things that I remember us talking about was that a banking transaction would be very, would be impossible to do without actually having somebody talk to the person in the car. You know, with a fast food or something like that or you can push a button or something like that and then get around to the window and pick it up. I think banking was what came up and that was where we stumbled on that, on that issue of mandating that it not be using speakers.
And since these are mostly in finance, this is for financial institutions, we're dealing, maybe we should specify that specifically, that because it is a financial institution, put something there. So, we're not putting something in the ordinance that talks about, while we're trying to develop alternatives?
But actually, this does apply to all types of drive-through uses. This set of standards applies to, you know, Walgreens or to a Burger King or to a bank. So, it's a fairly inclusive thing, so it is not specifically limited to financial institutions in this particular.
But maybe we should add some specificity, like for security reasons we're feasible as opposed to convenience, as opposed to expensive the applicant. You know, I can understand that's a very legitimate concern for banking, but if someone is saying, well, I can't afford to have one of those new-fangled speakers for my Dunkin' Donuts, I'm sorry, but if this is next to a neighborhood, you should be having some sort of buffering for the neighborhood. If it's a financial institution, they're not going to be loud anyway. They're not going to want everybody's account number blaring out all over the speakers. So, it's not going to be loud, it's not going to be a concern. So, some sort of specifics in there denoting what we mean by feasible, I think, something a little bit more, more, you know, specific.
The only comment I would give back on that, I think you have some good points, but what we're doing with this is we're putting the onus on the applicant to demonstrate. So, effectively, they have to demonstrate to the city zoning officers that what they're proposing is feasible. If it doesn't, then it would go to the board of adjustment. The other one is, in the absence of any specificity like now, you don't have any argument to make. So, you are getting some controls, poor as they are, but it may not hurt to take, to keep looking at it.
Thank you.
Mr. Coker.
Could you just explain how an impound lot is part of a financial institution?
This apparently is a history that surprised me when I learned about it, but apparently, and I'm sure David can talk a little bit more about it, there has been some history in the city of financial institutions repossessing cars that they had liens on and storing them on their lots. That was the issue.
Thanks. Mr. Coker.
Suppose for the sake of discussion, a towing company were to have a need to store cars that they tow, you know, from a private bank lot when you're not supposed to be there. Would you consider that an impound lot based on this language?
I would not because then it wouldn't be under, here, impound lot is listed under financial institutions. So, I would see that be part of the towing company's use.
That's fair. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Tanner? No? Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
Following the public hearing, I have a couple of comments that will help frame the issues.
Anybody in the public wish to comment on these proposed amendments to the city ordinance? Second time, anybody in the public? Third time, seeing no one rise, close the public hearing?
Mr. Chairman and board members, this is a case of where the board has benefited greatly from an initial small, rather small or narrowly defined issue, which was to establish whether or not we should expand or clarify the financial institution definition in the office research. That's what broadened out into the three categories that you now see. The other issue that came up directly from the board was the issue of the drive-throughs and that those could be an inappropriate use in some circumstances. So, again, our, the board's consultant worked on defining drive-throughs. So, the three major benefits I see arising from this effort, one was that we're proposing to amend the OR to better recognize financial-related uses. The second one was we've defined better the uses and terms that are related to an accessory use, i.e., drive-throughs. And three, I think the biggest component here is to define drive-throughs as an accessory use. I think we've defined something that is much broader than what the original charge was but is actually very favorable and very appropriate to the zoning ordinance. I think Rick has picked up on an issue and there are a couple of others. I think there's some confusion, for example, as to which districts this might apply. So, my suggestion would be that the, at this time, that you should direct the staff to include drive-throughs as an accessory use in the other districts of the city as one. Two, to have the department and the city attorney review all the proposed revisions so the board can formally recommend these, perhaps at your March meeting. And the purpose- And the purpose of that review would be to take a look at how an impound lot might be affected in other districts. And also to put the language a little bit more into the form that we use in our zoning ordinance, for example, setbacks in yards. But that'll give it one last review. But the benefit from this is we've defined a use better, we've set conditions up for accessory uses, and we've defined a mechanism where these can be applied to other districts. So for example, a drive-through is probably not appropriate in the central business districts, but is appropriate in a lot of the other business districts and we have one standard that would fit. And so we'd like the opportunity to expand the applicability of this, but to also clarify the language. If that is a sense of the Board, we will so do and bring it back to you at your March meeting.
Do you want to take a motion on that?
Whatever you feel.
Is it a public hearing? Is it a public hearing, right?
Yeah, it's been closed.
Oh, I'm sorry.
We're gonna make a motion that we...
Direct staff to, one, review the language, explore the implications of the impound lot, and that we expand drive-throughs as an accessory use in other districts of the city and bring it back before you...
Next month. Next month, March's meeting.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the Chair votes aye.
Now, what Lucy and I will be doing...
Thank you, David, on that. Moving along to Item E. The application of Portsmouth Farms LLC owner and Starbucks Coffee Company applicant for property located at 1855 Woodbury Avenue wherein a conditional use permit is requested as allowed in Article 6, Section 10-608B of the zoning ordinance to allow the demolition of the existing building and the construction of a 1,815 square-foot building with a drive-through window within an inland wetlands protection district. Said property is shown on Assistant Plan 215 as Lot 11 and lies within a general business district. Who's here tonight to speak on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. My name is Bernie Peelich. I'm an attorney here from Portsmouth. Here on behalf of the applicant, with me this evening is Luke DiStefano from Bowler Engineering, our site engineer, Adell Fiorello from New Hampshire Soils, our environmental consultant, and Kevin Petru from Starbucks Company, who is also here. I guess I can begin by saying, we heard you and we took your recommendations. As you may recall, we had a site walk in a subsequent meeting before this Board a couple of months ago, and Board, the Board at that time had concerns regarding whether or not we had explored all alternatives and found the alternative which had the least impact, not only on the wetland buffer, but also upon the area between the proposed site and the mobile home park. As a result, we have changed the plan considerably. As you know, we had considered a reuse of the existing Pizza Hut building. We are now talking about a demolition of that building and construction of a much smaller building from a 2,500 plus or minus square foot building. We're going down to an 1,800 square foot building. The advantage of that, as Luke DiStefano will explain to you, is it will allow us to maintain in its existing, in its existing condition and in its entirety, the buffer zone between the proposed structure and the drive-through lanes and the mobile home park here. As you can see, the, all of the hemlocks that exist there now will be maintained. None of them will be cut, none of them will be in any way affected by this proposal. Not only have we decreased the size of the building to 1,815 square feet from 2,520 square feet, we have also shifted the site slightly to the south. As you can see, this green space between the car wash or the quick-lube facility has been reduced so that we can maximize the buffer on this side, which we heard from the Board was of a primary concern. As a result, we went back to the Conservation Commission with the new plan. It was unanimously recommended and they were very pleased with our efforts in amending the plan to accommodate the wishes of this Board as well as the concerns of the mobile home park residents, especially Phyllis Cheslock, who's here. Phyllis has gone over the plan and has indicated to me, and I'm not going to speak for her, but it certainly is much better than that which we had previously proposed. We are still proposing the fencing to eliminate debris blowing into the wetlands. There was a condition placed upon the recommendation of the Conservation Commission, actually there were two. One is unnecessary. We had proposed curbing all along here anyways, but Conservation Commission wanted to make sure that there was no stormwater runoff down the slope, which would affect the hemlock trees. We're proposing no stormwater runoff in that direction. This is curbed. The fence will be on top of it. We are also bringing the fencing all the way around. The other condition was that any trees which are damaged or destroyed or which die of natural causes in the future in this area will be replaced by the applicant, so that that buffer will be maintained as part of the condition of a recommendation from the Conservation Commission. So we believe it's a much better plan. We're still keeping the stormwater runoff as previously proposed. It will be a closed system. It will be running through the Vortechnic system prior to any discharge into the wetlands. As you know, previously, at the present time, it is untreated flow into the wetlands and we believe that with the fencing and with the treatment of the stormwater runoff, it's a win-win situation. Obviously, the wetland water quality is going to be improved. With that, I would turn it over to Luke DiStefano from Bowler, who can go over with you the site plan as far as it relates to the conditional use permit. Obviously, Board members know we're going to be back here for site plan review at a later date. This is a conditional use permit only. Thank you. Take your pick.
Good evening. Again, for the record, Luke DiStefano with Bowler Engineering, and unfortunately Bernie stole most of my thunder, but what I'd like to do is elaborate on some of the items that have changed from the earlier plan that we presented to you at the last meeting. As you can see from the renderings presented, the rendering to my extreme right is a rendering of the originally proposed site layout, including the incorporation of the existing 2,520-square-foot Pizza Hut building. The rendering to my near right is the new proposal with the 1,815-square-foot freestanding complete raise and rebuild structure that we are now proposing. And as you can see from the simple renderings, what we have accomplished by the raise and rebuild design is we've increased green space, which was, again, a primary concern, not only by the Conservation Commission, but this Board, but we've increased green space in the wetland buffer, which was a direct concern as part of the conditional use permit. Additionally, we've reduced the size of the building by over 33 percent. We've gone, again, from 2,520 square feet to 1,815 square feet, which, again, is about 705 square feet less building. In the wetland buffer specifically, the original plan had about half of the building, or about 1,200 square feet, was in the wetland, where this plan only has 783 square feet, again, which is evident in the rendering to my near right. The biggest improvement we feel with the new plan is the increased buffer strip along the northern side of the property. At the last meeting, there was concern, extreme concern raised over the fact that the proposed development was encroaching to the north to the point where all or nearly all of the existing vegetation along that northern property line, including 10 of 12 mature trees, were being removed. That was primary concern of this Board as well as some neighbors that had spoken out and objected to that due to the fact that not only would visual screening be impacted, but just the general nature of that buffer zone to the north and the buffer, the landscape screening within the wetland buffer zone would be impacted too greatly to allow for the granting of the conditional use permit. We went back to the drawing board and we said, we need to find a way to mitigate the encroachment into that northern property line. And we did that, as Bernie indicated, by reducing the size of the building and pulling everything to the south so that we were able to maximize the buffer to the north and still maintain our design objectives. And during the previous hearing, we had indicated that we felt we met the four conditions required for the approval of a conditional use permit. There was some concern raised by Board members that we hadn't done that specifically, that we hadn't come up with a design that was the, a design that resulted in the least amount of impact to the site and specifically the wetland buffer. Based on all of the constraints that we had, all of the items that we are trying to meet, all of the different Boards that we are trying to satisfy, we now feel that this plan does, without question, address all of the four concerns or all of the four criteria necessary for the granting of the conditional use. With that, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them from the Board. Otherwise, I'd like to quickly turn it over to Adell from New Hampshire Soil Consultants to, again, reiterate how we feel this project does meet those four criteria.
Yeah, we'll take questions for Mr. DiStefano. Mr. Hopely.
Yes, thank you. I think it's, personally, I think it's a much improved plan. I would not have asked this following question had Mr. Peelich not mentioned on several occasions on his introduction remarks about the fence. And while the fence probably is a site review item, since you've mentioned it tonight, I can't find it on these plans.
It's not shown on the new plan. One of the concerns we had or one of the issues that was raised, again, with conversations with the Butters and the different Boards we met, was exactly what type of fence, what type of screening. We're willing to work not only with the neighbors, but with the different Boards, specifically the planning Board during the site plan review process, to find a fence or something else that meets those objectives, which is primarily debris obstruction from being able to make its way into the wetland.
And headlights.
Pardon me?
And headlights, as you come around to...
Sure.
...meet the, but I wanted to make it clear, there's no fence on the plans that are before us. Thank you.
That's him coming. Anybody else up? Ms. Hayden.
Could you just walk us through how stormwater travels on this site? Where is it collected? Where is it going, et cetera?
Sure.
And again, the stormwater plan that we have presented is a conceptual stormwater plan. And all of the items that we had referenced in our initial design, i.e. the deep-sum catch basins with the oil-water hoods, the vortex stormwater quality unit, all of those devices will still be proposed under this particular plan. And on sheet, I believe it's five of the, the plans that were presented. What we see happening here is basically reiterating existing drainage patterns. The site is small enough where we feel, through the introduction of three or potentially four deep-sum catch basins, which would be located in the western portion of the site, the southern portion of the site, and one on the eastern portion, we can collect all of the runoff from the paved portions of the property, including the building. It would then be conveyed into a stormwater quality unit. Again, we're proposing a vortex right now. We know there was some concern raised at the last meeting as to just how effective that particular unit is. Again, we'd be happy to work with the Commission or this Board in finding an approved equal, but the stormwater would then discharge out through the vortex stormwater quality unit or the stormwater quality unit and back into the existing box culvert that runs from the wetland on the western portion of Woodbury Avenue, discharges on the near eastern side of the property. And again, through the introduction of deep-sum catch basins and the stormwater quality unit, we feel that we are putting forth our best foot in getting a design that will significantly enhance stormwater quality on-site.
How does the water on the north side of the site make it into this system?
I'm sorry? On the north side of the site?
The north side.
Well, the north side, we feel if we can't pitch it, and again, we're mimicking existing grading, which, if you've had a chance to review the survey, stormwater pitches in a southwest and southeast directions into two catch basins. There's a catch basin, existing catch basin here, and one directly over the existing culvert. And again, we feel we can mimic that with a high point or a ridge line here that will move the water out in all directions. Again, on the southern portion of the site, it ramps back up as you move towards the Jiffy Lube, so that water will pitch towards the center drive lane, and same on the eastern side. If, for whatever reason, we can't get stormwater from here to these two points, we have no problems dropping in additional catch basins and then bringing it back to the catch basin or the stormwater quality unit as proposed.
Thank you.
Mr. Coviallo.
Are the catch, do the catch basins have oil-water separators?
They have the oil-water hoods, correct.
What is the maintenance schedule on those? How do those get maintained? Is there, is there one?
Yes, we would prepare an operation and maintenance plan. Typically, it's twice a year. If the Board saw fit for more stringent maintenance, it's twice a year. Or if sediment gets within six inches of the hood itself, they're supposed to be cleaned out. And when we get into the full site plan review process, I believe one of the requirements is a drainage plan or a drainage report, and then that drainage report will have that operation and maintenance plan.
May I continue? As you, as you mentioned in your talk, I was the one that had concern over the Vortechnics. And I was wondering if there's any chance or is any plan to do street sweeping on the lot? Does Starbucks do that normally or is there a plan?
Can you clarify, please, what the question is? Street sweeping?
Is there any plan to clean the lot, the parking lot? Does Starbucks, I know some organizations have a, just in their own beautification standards, they'd like to clean the lot every once in a while.
Yeah, if you could grab the mic, your name and address for the record, please.
Certainly. Good evening. This still on? Okay. My name is Kevin Petru and I'm with Starbucks Coffee Company, 130 Woodland Trace in Aurora, Ohio. And to answer your question, Mr. Coviallo, yes, we certainly do, you know, routine maintenance and sweeping and cleaning of our parking lots. So we will, you know, keep it kept in a clean and orderly fashion.
I'm wondering if we can get a schedule of cleaning of the parking lot. I'm not so sold on the Vortechnics, and what I've been reading is that one of the best things you can do is to pick up the particulates right away from the lot by street sweeping and specifically a vacuum-assisted street sweeper. And so I'm wondering if, I noticed on other applicants that they've proposed doing that, and I think it's a great system. And I think that would, that would alleviate my concerns about the Vortechnics, if we had some sort of scheduled, you know, something that we can put inside today's approval or whatever as a stipulation. That I just want to hear what you have to say about that.
Sure. Well, I mean, again, certainly, I think that's a very good suggestion and I think an appropriate one. And I believe, as Luke pointed out, as part of the site plan approval process, that there would be specific maintenance standards that would be attached and part and parcel with how those systems would be taken care of. So we're absolutely willing to do that. That's not an issue at all. We're a very, very socially responsible company and that's something we want to, we want to watch out for.
Okay. And my last question is regarding snow storage on the lot. Can you speak as, where that's going to occur?
Yeah, again, with the increase in green space on the site, we still see areas where we can store snow, primarily in the, what is the northwest corner, just outside of the wetland buffer. Obviously, if we can, we want to keep all snow storage outside of the wetland buffer and primarily, again, based on the fact that the site is relatively small, only 25,000 square feet, and about a third of that is landscaped. This area here, which is, again, set back far enough off of the right-of-way, would definitely be capable of maintaining or storing all of the snow that would be generated on a site of this size. We also have a small landscape strip here, which is... We also have a small landscape strip here, which is part of a little bit larger landscape strip that is shared with the Jiffy Lube property where, in the event that it's a significant snowfall that can't be contained in this corner, we do have room there. But again, we want to keep it outside of the wetland buffer area.
That's what I was hoping to hear. Thank you.
Mr. Will.
This probably is more of a question for the representative from Starbucks. Is...are drive-through standard features in Starbucks locations?
Well, drive-through is a more recent initiative for the company and is one that we're probably doing now in probably 60 to 70 percent of our new locations.
You just answered my question. I was going to ask how many...what percentage, and you just answered that.
Pretty high percentage.
Looking...looking at this and seeing, I have to say first off, let me...let me thank you and congratulate you on a much better project than what I saw before. I certainly believe it meets criteria three, but I...for the life of me and maybe the other board members would chime in on this, criteria four mentions for conditional use. I mean, we're just dealing with conditional use here. We're not talking about headlights and fences and such, though we'll probably be talking about that toward the end of the public hearing, just to put you on notice. I'm still rather concerned with the fourth criteria, which is the project provides the least possible impact. And I can still see a decent business being constructed on this lot that makes money for Starbucks, that meets regulations, and is the least adverse. And the way that is is by not having a drive-through at all. And I can't seem to get my head around that, that there is such a desire for a drive-through. And above and beyond my own, and these are off into the future, above me on my own, my own concerns about a drive-through between a residential area and a very busy, very successful gas station, I still have a problem even on the...even on the...no heavens. Even on the...on the fourth criteria of least possible impact, I can still see a Starbucks here without a drive-through. Could you elaborate as to what the pressing need is for a drive-through at this particular Starbucks on the busiest street in our fair city?
Do my best to answer that. Certainly, as you might gather, when we're developing new locations, we attempt to size the facilities and also position them to serve the needs of the adjoining community and businesses that are in that trade area. You know, if we were coming into downtown Portsmouth, for example, certainly we would not be looking to do a drive-through type facility. However, in, you know, what I guess I would consider more of a very well-developed commercial corridor in order to be competitive and also to offer to our customers what they're requesting from us, a drive-through facility, we believe is absolutely essential. And for the investment that we're looking at placing in this particular location, that also is a requirement in order to receive an appropriate return on investment. So in a nutshell, you know, the facility and the type of facility, whether drive-through or non-drive-through, is predicated, in this case, based on the trade area criteria and needs of our customers.
Thank you.
Mr. Coker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Two questions. On your drainage, you have the roof runoff in a subsurface retention that is not stated. It says to be determined. Also, you made a representation that when the trees die, they will be replaced. If and when the trees die, they will be replaced. Would you have any objection to those two items being stipulations on the conditional use?
No. I believe one's already a condition from the Conservation Commission relative to the drainage of the roof. As we indicated in the first round of hearings, we are going to detain the runoff or retain it on-site. If we can infiltrate it back into groundwater, we will. That's the ideal situation. If we cannot because of high groundwater and/or soil conditions, we'll put in a closed-pipe system, detain it, release it at a much slower rate, so we have no problems with that being a condition.
My reason for asking is that many times or occasionally, these little details we forget. You know, site review comes up and, you know, it's not on the plan, and we don't remember every little detail for every little plan. So I would like to see it as a stipulation on the conditional use if that's acceptable to you and acceptable to the board. That's it for me.
Any other questions? I just have one question for you. I don't need exact numbers, but the existing building, is any of the existing foundation going to be used for the new building?
No.
And is the existing pavement going to be re-ground or are you going to patch and match, or how are you going to work that?
Probably going to take everything right up. I know they're still working the final numbers. It's a completely different project, and I know they're outlining a bunch of money that they didn't expect to, but that's still up in the air at this point, but I think it's all being removed.
Okay. There's no other questions? Did Adele have a presentation that she wanted to give or...
Good evening, Adele Fiorella from New Hampshire Soil Consultants on behalf of the applicant. I actually don't have anything to add that hasn't already been said, although what I can do is reiterate the positive aspects of this plan as it relates to wetlands, functions, and values, and the associated buffer. One thing that we've been able to retain with this revised plan are all of the positive aspects that we had in the previous plan. Although they're not...the fence isn't showing on the plan, that's something that we would like to see as a condition simply because of the debris component. That was something that we had felt strongly about when we did our initial assessment. There are other good planning reasons for having that I...that the board raised as far as lights shining into the trailer park. We also still can maintain our buffer enhancement planting plan, which was a positive aspect of the previous proposal. We still have our stormwater treatment enhancement as well. And obviously, the largest gain is being able to maintain the trees along the roadway between the trailer park and the site. I really think that because the property, the proposed plan is now showing a much smaller building, we've been able to gain green space. And because of the size of the building, the additional green space, it does have a less impacting alternative than the original proposal. I don't really have anything other to add than that.
Any questions for Adele? No? Thank you. I see Peter Britz is in the back. If anybody has questions for Peter before we open up to the public hearing? No? Any other questions for the applicant?
Actually, I have a question for Peter.
Yes, sir.
Peter, can I ask you a question? Could you recommend a frequency of street cleaning? Do you have any knowledge in that area?
Peter Britz, environmental planner. I don't have a lot of knowledge in the area. I can...I can get back to you and provide a recommendation for site review if that's appropriate. I haven't looked into it a lot. I know it's a...I know it is one of the better, best management practices that's out there in terms of picking up particulate matter and that type of thing, but I don't have a frequency. I think some places do it as often as every week, some places do it a couple of times a year. So I don't know what the, you know, industry standard if there is one, but I'll look into that and report back for site review.
I'd appreciate that.
I think that would be appropriate.
In both the frequency, I guess, and the type of sweeper.
Okay.
Any other questions for Peter? Thank you.
One question for you.
Oh. One more question Ms. Hayden has for the applicant?
Not you, Peter. You can run free.
Peter, you can...
You can run free. It's a question for the applicant.
Oh, sorry.
Which is really not related to the conditional use permit, but looking forward to the future. Just a question on where you actually place your order at the drive-through. Why does it have to be there? Why couldn't it be on the side towards the lube place, the more commercial side of the property? And you don't have to answer that now, but it's just sort of a...just a question that might conceivably come up later, and feel free to weigh in on it if you'd like.
It's, again, quickly, it's typically set back five cars from the order window. That allows stacking of approximately, again, four to five cars from the window to the order board. We've also configured the board as shown. Granted, it's schematic again at this point, but so that you order into the board, which is directed away from the mobile home park. So therefore, we feel the most noise that's generated by these small microphones will be directed away from the mobile home park. If there's opportunity to move it a little more towards the south, I don't necessarily see that as being a big deal, but it's definitely something we can address further at the site plan process.
And just to follow up on that, does Starbucks, have they ever used new technologies where there's a...you're pressing in your order versus yelling out your order and someone's yelling back to you? The computerized message screens that...touch screen?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Just to follow up to Cindy's, you...you don't use them or you haven't thought about using them?
I'm not aware of it being used anywhere in our system at this point.
Any other questions for the applicant? Okay, thank you. I'll now open up the public hearing. Anybody in the public wish to speak too far against this application? Your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Phyllis Chazak. I live at 202 Oriental Gardens. I still have the concern of the retainer wall and the fence. I don't know how high they're going...either one of those are going to be because two main concerns is with the lights, because it is a drive-through, so it's a constant light and the constant...excuse me, constant car fumes. So that those cars are going to be there. They're not going to be turned off. They're just going to be sitting there idling, and so there's going to be constant fumes there. So...and I understand, and I really appreciate the fact those trees are going to stay there. Then when he mentioned that if the trees died, they'll be replaced. So when the trees are going to be replaced, are they going to be tall trees, small trees, bushes, brushes, or what? Because that has to be used as a buffer for us. And I am right here. Starbucks is right here. And then the other thing that I'm really concerned about is, I'm not sure if Starbucks realizes, but the car wash that is right here, this is our driveway, the car wash is right there, is the other driveway. This driveway is always blocked, and the traffic goes up the road a ways. So...and that traffic will block Starbucks driveway for people getting in and people getting out. And I'm not sure if Starbucks realizes that at all, but we do. And so when the summertime comes, I mean, we have the problem now, and it isn't even summer. So when summertime does come and that traffic starts in with that car wash, then Starbucks is going to end up with a problem with the traffic.
Thank you. Any questions for Phyllis?
I just would point out and remind you that I can assure you, we will be looking at traffic very closely at the site plan process. So I was out at the car wash the other day, and it took me quite a while to get out, so...yeah.
Mr. Will.
Phyllis, is it?
Yes.
Are you aware that one of the trees will be removed? There is a 4.3-foot caliper tree, one of the thickest in the forest, that will be removed. It's the one closest to the existing building? Yeah, they have it on the plan, existing 4.3-caliber pine tree to be removed. It seems to be right in the...in the drive-through lane. I mean, the vast majority of trees are staying, don't get me wrong, but I believe the largest tree, at least the largest caliper tree, is going to be removed.
You're 100% correct. And as we indicated, unfortunately, that tree was planted in non-conformity with the originally approved plan, planted directly over that existing box culvert. So that tree, even if this project doesn't move forward, within the immediate future, that tree has to come out of there. It's going to compromise that box culvert, which runs from the opposite side of Woodbury Avenue. I think the last thing this commission or any board in this town would want would be that culvert getting compromised. So that tree would have to come down, but it's just coincidental that it comes down as part of this development.
If I could follow up, is the existing piece of building on a slab right now?
I believe it is. I'm not sure if it has a basement or not.
And is this building on a slab?
I believe it will be.
It is.
Okay, thank you.
Second time, anybody in the public wish to speak too far against this application? Third time, seeing no one rise, I will close the public hearing.
What's your pleasure, board?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion, if only for purposes of discussion, maybe just to hash out a few issues with the board. I'd like to move the denial of the conditional use permit based on the fact that it does not meet criteria four, that the proposed project has the least possible impact on the wetlands buffer. And if I could just get a second for just for purposes of discussion.
Is there a second on the motion for denial? Second time, motion, second, nope. Worth a try? Withdrawn? Being withdrawn, do I hear a motion?
I'd like to move to approve the applicant with the stipulation discussed in your report. I guess just approve it.
I have a motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Discussion on the motion?
Tony, you said stipulations?
I meant to...I shouldn't take that off because I was referring to the report back from Peter, but that'll be during site review.
Okay, well, I would like to add two stipulations to the conditional use permit, and they may be superfluous, but I'd like it on the record as part of the conditional use, that one, the tree...when, if and when the trees die, they get replaced, I don't know the proper wording, with a like tree or something. And secondly...
Mature.
Mature, thank you.
That's a great word.
Very good word, thank you, mature trees. And that the roof runoff, subsurface stormwater retention be, I think his terminology was, to be determined. I just want to make sure that those are on the record so we don't overlook them in site review, that's all.
I'm assuming that the stormwater is going to be reviewed by TAC anyhow, whether we concluded this or not. You want to put it on there, you can. My thought is that. My guess is that'll be...
I would be more comfortable, because with all the details that we work with, that one could slide off and, you know, it's not...as Raymond said, it's not going to hurt anything to put it in there, so...you have no objections?
Can I just get a clarification on the replacement of the landscaping? If the tree is lost, sometimes it's harder to get a replacement large tree that will successfully transplant. The smaller trees transplant better and catch up faster and grow better than, you know, maybe moving in a 20-foot tree, maybe moving in an eight-foot that might catch up and be healthier. So an appropriate tree that will live, matching the variety, rather than a mature tree that may not make it more than six months.
Okay, fair enough.
Is that something in that same vein that we could possibly integrate, that, you know, either the city arborist or the city get involved in coordination with this?
We have resources, yes.
Yes.
I guess my comment is the fact that we're having a five-minute discussion, and this kind of means it's more about site review, and I don't want to lock ourselves into something on conditional use. I mean, the tree, the roof runoff would seem to relate because it's the wetland and what's going in there, but the trees, I think, we're kind of out on a limb on that one, and I'd rather discuss that at site review.
Actually...
So that we don't paint ourselves into a corner or give the applicant bad direction at this point in the process.
Okay.
Actually, if I understand correctly, that is a part of criteria three, the natural vegetative state. Not necessarily the value of the wetlands or drainage issues or even least possible impact. I think it's well within our purview to discuss trees as long as it's within the wetlands buffer, per se. Anything outside the wetlands buffer, I think, would be of the realm of site review, if I step in on too many department toes.
I don't feel stepped on.
I would agree with Raymond that the trees are within the buffer zone, and I believe it was in the purview of this board that anything within that buffer zone is part of the conditional use permit. Therefore, I think it could and probably should remain, just to ensure that it happens.
Ms. Hayden.
Well, and maybe the way to look at it then is we can augment whatever we say for permit conditions on the conditional use, we can augment during site review.
I would concur.
I guess I just don't want to forget, that's all. I just don't want to forget.
Do you have a motion and a second? We've had discussions on the motion.
Is that with or without stipulations?
That's with stipulations.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Will.
Very briefly, I'll be voting against... Very briefly, I'll be voting against this motion, and the reason is this, is first off, I wanna thank the applicant for running through the process of figuring out which is the least possible impact. Before, we had a large building and a drive-through that impacted the natural vegetative state. Now we have something that, in my opinion, does meet criteria three, minimum alteration of the natural vegetative state. But I'm forced with the, with the very simple question, does Starbucks need a drive-through? And I find myself answering no. Do, is it within the purview of this board to say, does Starbucks need a drive-through for conditional use? Yes, because criteria four indicates that it must be the least possible impact. I think the applicant, through these two plans, has demonstrated that, at least in my opinion, the least possible impact is to make Starbucks what Pizza Hut was for 25 years, and that is a good neighbor with a building with no drive-through. In my opinion, I think the least possible impact is the existing building with no drive-through. I think if, for whatever reason, we don't do that, I think we're violating criteria four. Obviously, the board disagrees with me, that's why we have board meetings, but I think, I think it would be a deep mistake for us to put a drive-through here, not only for all the issues of site review we'll be dealing with later, but just on the basis of criteria four.
Hearing that, I will call the vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
And the chair votes aye. Moving on to G, the application of Portsmouth Hospital Office Building Association, i.e. Jackson Gray condominium's owner, for property located at 330 Bothwick Avenue and Islington Woods LLC. Owner for property located off of Bothwick Avenue wherein preliminary and sub, final subdivision approval is requested between three lots to allow the following. Lot 2-2, as shown on map 240, increasing an area from 4.093 acres to 4.973 acres. Lot 7-4A, as shown on map 234, increasing an area from 6.44, 488 acres to 9.085 acres. And lot 52, as shown on map 234, decreasing an area from 3.477 acres to zero acres. Said properties are located in an office research district where a minimum lot area of three acres is required and are shown on assessor plan 240 as lot 2-2, and assessor plan 234 as lot 52, and lot 7-4A. Who's here tonight to speak on behalf of the applicant?
I am, Mr. Chairman. My name is Ralph Woodman, I'm a Portsmouth lawyer, and I'm here to speak on behalf of the applicants. And with me tonight is Steve Michaud from Doucet Survey, who prepared the plan, and Bill Duffy from the applicants, who was also interested in the situation. If I may, the plan that, the nice colored plan, and it's a presentation plan by Doucet Survey, and I'll go from my right to the left. This, this green is a piece of property that is currently owned by HCA Realty, Inc. And the intention is, although this is in front of you right now, but the intention is to build another new medical office building on this site. The lot that is under discussion tonight is the lot that is comprised of the purple area and the darker green area. And that is three-plus acres, that is currently owned by Islington Woods. And the proposal is to, request is to approve the, the lot line adjustment that would combine the two greens together for approximately a nine-acre lot. And this orange-red thing with the purple would be, the purple would be added to the Jackson Gray area. The Jackson Gray is the, the, the orange lot. The intention for that area is, although it's the Jackson Gray building, it's actually a condominium, and the name of the condominium is Portsmouth Hospital Office Building Association. Probably in the near future to be changed to Jackson Gray condominium, which would make more sense, because that's what everybody calls it. This is, this is Bothwick Avenue, and if this 0.8 acres that's purple merges with the Jackson Gray, what this will do will be to give the opportunity to construct additional parking. If you're standing on the street looking at the Jackson Gray building, the additional parking will be able to be constructed. This current parking lot will be extended into this area. What will then happen with the darker green is that there is a right-of-way that Islington Woods will reserve to itself for its use for a private roadway that will be in this area here. And then, unencumbered, for all purposes, will be this portion of the darker area, with all the green being combined into one lot, this being reserved as a right-of-way, and the, and this is better shown on the plan that was actually presented, and this area being used for all purposes for the proposed, in the future, medical office building that will come before you. Although this is the plan that the engineers did, and is their colored plan. Sometime, I'm glad they did this, because that's my colored plan that I brought. And this is, this is the, this is the plan that is, you know, presented. Again, Bothwick Avenue, Jackson Gray, my, my red striped area shows what will be, combined with Jackson Gray, give them the opportunity to extend their parking out there. This crosshatch there is the reserved right-of-way for Islington Woods, and then this area will be combined with the lot next door for a total of nine acres. Now, on the plan, and hold that. This, this note does not show the correct area of the existing lot. I think it says it's six, six acres. Note number two on the plan is correct, showing what the, the area is. And there was just some transposition error by the engineer. So this is actually 3.477 acres, being the total of the existing lot. So, I'd be happy to answer any questions. This will result in, in two lots which, you know, will both comply with your zoning and hopefully will be approved by you.
Any questions for the applicant, Mr. Coker?
Actually, not for the applicant, but to the board. Our memo, memorandum for planning board meetings, says the department's memorandum on this application will be provided under separate cover. I can't find mine, so if anybody has a copy... That must've gotten when I was moving stuff around, thank you.
While you're reading that, any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Coviallo.
What, I guess, am I correct to say, what you're trying to gain here is that the new office building will have more area to include in their calculation of coverage, so they can build a bigger building? Is that what's going on?
That's the reason they're paying the big bucks. That's exactly right.
Okay.
Could you put it clearer, Ralph? That's the reason for it. I mean, as a, as a side benefit, well, as a, as a side benefit, you know, Jackson Gray is going to have probably approximately 45, 25 additional parking spaces in the red area, but they will really gain perhaps 40 or 50, because they will be able to extend the parking that they, they, they have now. So, they, it will take a lot of cars off Bothwick Avenue and be able to be parked next to the medical office building. But the additional benefit just happens to be that the medical, the new medical office building site will add area to it, which will allow it additional parking as well.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Coker?
Just one for the department. I'm assuming this meets all setbacks and, you know, all areas and everything, all the zoning and...
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll now open up the public hearing. Anybody wish to speak too far against this application? Second time, too far or against? Third time, seeing no one rise, I'll close the public hearing. What's your pleasure, board?
Chairman, I move approval. Most of those stipulations, but then, three stipulations?
On page...
Ah, I do have that. And with the additional stipulation that that note in the body of the plan describing lots 7-4B be corrected to reflect the right numbers.
That'd be note two on the drawings?
No, note two's correct, it's actually right in the...
It's in the body.
Okay.
In the body.
Existing lot 7-4B box.
Description of 7-4B.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Moving on to item H, the application of KNS Energy, Inc., owner for property located at 140 Lafayette Road, wherein site plan approval is requested to construct a one-story, 9-foot-8-inch by 43-foot-8-inch building addition, with related paving, utilities, landscaping, drainage, and associated site improvements. Said property is shown on assessor plan 252 as lot seven and lies within a general business district. Who's here tonight on behalf of the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Bernie Peelich, I'm here on behalf of KNS Energy. The applicant, with me is John Shagman of Ambid Engineering, the site engineer. I assume that most board members are familiar with this site, it is, it is a truly unique site. It's one of the smallest commercial lots and sites in the city of Portsmouth, and on top of that, it is not served by public sewer, believe it or not, it has a septic system. There is no public sewer available to this site. We began this process, John Shagman and I and the applicant, probably eight months ago, maybe even longer, when he came in to me and said, is there anything I can do? He had a building that was, I think, eight feet wide by, I don't know, 40 feet long, but it was so narrow and so small that he could not, because he did not have enough space, he could not, didn't comply with ADA. He wanted to expand the building so that he could have ADA bathrooms that complied and somebody could actually go in there with a wheelchair and he could get a liquor license, because he, he was too small to get a liquor license to sell beer. So we proposed originally, basically doubling the size of the building to make it expand another eight or 10 feet, I can't remember, out towards the back, and we went to the Board of Adjustment and we got a variance. And we started the technical advisory committee site review process, and site review had a couple of problems with the location of some of the parking lot, parking spaces. So John Shagman redesigned the plan, made the building a little smaller so that we didn't need one of the parking spaces, went back to the zoning board with the now reduced building, once again got our variances, and then proceeded to the technical advisory committee and received their favorable recommendation, and we are here now. With that bit of history, I'll, I'll turn it over to John, and he can explain to you the, the, the proposal.
John Shagman from Ambid Engineering. The proposal is simply to construct a 9-foot, 8-inch by 43-foot, 8-inch addition on the, to the rear of the existing structure. As Bernie mentioned, we received approval from the Board of Adjustment on December 20th and the technical advisory committee on January 31st of this year. The only other real, there are a couple of other items associated with the site plan. The electric service comes in the back, so we're gonna relocate it from its existing juncture with the building to remount it on the proposed addition. The septic system is being relocated, the current system is larger than the proposed system. We took advantage of some new technologies, made the system smaller, so we'll be reconstructing a new septic system behind the building. Putting in a small area of pavement to accommodate a parking space on the south side of the building, doing some striping to delineate parking spaces, and that pretty much is the entire proposal. We'll be removing a, an existing fenced-in area that used to service as a container for waste oil, and we'll be relocating the dumpster and putting a conforming enclosure on it. The technical advisory committee recommended your approval subject to two stipulations. First was that we add a five-foot sidewalk easement along the front, which, if you notice on the plan, there is an existing eight-and-a-half-foot wide easement that was granted to the DOT, and the five-foot sidewalk easement would be in that, that same location. So we have no problem granting that easement as a part of this approval. There currently is a sidewalk easement on the property on the south side, and there is sidewalk constructed there, so that will match in at some point in the future and provides better pedestrian access. The second stipulation that was, that we have a landscaping plan and that be reviewed by the planning department, we have no problem with that. We anticipate there is a landscaped island in the front, and we'll be working with the planning department to come up with some appropriate plantings for that island. I guess that's pretty much the, the full proposal here, and I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Mr. Coker?
I'm just, I'm sort of astounded when Bernie said that this is on a septic system. I, I know it has nothing to do with this, so please just educate me, this question is strictly for educational purposes only. Why? I mean, there's a sewer line that I'm sure runs...
Nearby.
Nearby?
The closest sewer, the, the Yocan sewer went out the back of the building and out, I believe, through an easement across some of budding lots out to Marona Road. And the sewer on the other side for the shopping mall is, goes out the back to a sewer that's in Beverly Hill Road. So there is sewer in Beverly Hill Road, but it is a significant distance from the property. It's just not, you would, you know, the Urban Forestry Center is across the street.
Mm-hmm.
And then there is sewer that is, services in Lafayette Road, but it's on the other side of the intersection. So it's just one little spot that, it's always had a septic system and...
I, I'm assuming that they looked at the cost of hooking to the sewer versus septic and, you know...
Yeah.
Came, came in favor of septic, so...
Yeah.
Interesting, I, I really didn't know that, thank you.
Well, actually, my question was very similar, I didn't know if there had any exploration been undertaken for the owners of the former Yocan's lot to get an easement to tie into their line.
We had tried to get in touch with the owners, the current owners of the now torn-down Yocans, and we were thinking about trying to get possibly a, an access easement so that we could come in and park in the back of the building. And we hadn't thought... And we hadn't thought about the sewer issue, but in just trying to pursue that, we really, they never called us back. I mean, I don't think, I think it's a good idea, and maybe if the timing was better and they were in the process of deciding what they wanted to do, it would be prudent, but at this point in time, it's kind of difficult.
Any other question?
Fair enough.
Any other questions for the applicant? No? The, are they going to remain open during construction?
I would imagine they, they would want to, yes.
Okay.
Yeah. I think it's, the way it's constructed, all the, everything's in the back, so they probably could.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for the applicant? No? Thank you. Anybody in the public wish to speak to, for, against this application? Anybody in the public to, for, against? Third time seeing no one, rise. I'll close the public hearing. What is your pleasure, Board? Mr. Chairman?
I move to approve the application with the two stipulations.
For site plan approval?
Yes.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Moving on to item I. The Portsmouth Planning Board is conducting a public hearing to take public comment on proposed amendments to the city's site review, rules, and regulations as amended. The amendments change the section entitled "Applicants' Responsibilities," number two, as well as "Site Review Application Form." Copies of the proposed amendments and application forms are on file with the Planning Department Office and available for public inspection. David?
Actually, it's Lucy.
Lucy?
We passed out copies last month, and then, again, we perfected the following a little more on the subdivision rules and regulations, but basically, the site review regulations is a very simple change. It changes the title of the site review application, and also will keep the regulations current as to the fee as set by the city council by ordinance, rather than having any fee referred to in the regulations themselves. That is really the only change that's happening at this time to the site review regulations.
Okay. Any questions for Lucy on that? Mr. Coker?
When these get, assuming these move forward and we will get a completed, updated copy?
We will.
Oh, good, because mine looks like it's about two-hundred years old, so...
We will, we will get, as soon as I can incorporate them, they will be in the mail to you.
Good, thank you.
And these are the board's regulations. We will forward copies onto the council for their information.
Okay.
Any other questions for Lucy? No?
They're looking for a motion?
You might want to see if there are any speakers.
I'm going to take public comment. Anybody in the public wish to speak to, for, or against? Anybody in the public wish to speak to, for, or against?
Could you have them stand in line, please?
Third time?
I always get the winners.
Seeing no one, rise. We'll close the public hearing. I assume at this point, David, we...
We'd want an action from this board recommending approval of these amendments so we can give them to you.
So moved.
Second.
Just a second, yeah, and I moved in second. The form was beautiful. I, just a comment, knowing how people fill things out, under property location, I can see someone not giving you a street address. Because you didn't ask for the street address. Yeah, you could just say, you know...
In the city of Portsmouth?
You know, I, you use street address everywhere else, so just to...
Okay.
It's funny because it's true.
Proof as amended.
You know, and even, even when you ask for street address, you may not get that either.
Okay, we will do that.
It's a start.
I know.
With the one amendment?
Yeah, street address on the form.
No, that's a good point.
Are you referring to the question that we have for zoning in Portsmouth, Virginia the other day?
Really? No kidding.
England.
Well, one of my applications, we have applicant, and then under, I have this means you.
Any other comment on the motion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye.
Next one.
Item J, the Portsmouth Planning Board is conducting a public hearing to take public comment on proposed amendments to the city's subdivision rules and regulations as amended. The amendments change section three, entitled "Procedure for Subdivision," as well as the subdivision and lot line revision application forms. Copies of the proposed amendments and application forms are on file in the Planning Department Office and available for public inspections. Lucy?
These are changes to the subdivision regulations, rules and regulations that also eliminate any reference to fee structure and make it as set by the city ordinance, change the proper names to the new applications that we're using, and just a little clarification as to when the postage and advertising is being requested to be paid, and then under B, I think we clarified a little better under planning board procedures, how you deal with, what is it, lot line?
Verifications.
Verifications, and hopefully that's a little easier to understand, and those are the only changes that are coming through on the subdivision rules and regulations at this time. It was basically to bring the, this rules and regulations in compliance and consistent with the fees as they evolve.
Okay. Any questions for Lucy on this?
And I checked, there's no property location on the two applications. I have my sticky ready to go.
I just wanted to comment to thank Lucy for her work on this. This housekeeping stuff takes time, and I think that it's really important to do for a variety of reasons, and I think the application forms look much more professional, and despite Mr. Hopley's comments, I think it's a great improvement over what's there.
No, they look great. Well, they do look great. I think I said...
We'll be using them tomorrow.
So thank you, Lucy.
Any other questions for Lucy?
Proof as presented.
Hearing none. I'll open up...
Motion. Oh, sorry.
I'll, I'll open up the public hearing at this point. Any of the pub, anybody in the public wish to speak to, for, or against? Anybody in the public to, for, against?
This means you.
Third time seeing no one, rise. I'll close the public hearing.
Motion to approve is presented.
With a glare-free second, yes.
Moved and a seconded. Any comments? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye.
See, and you like those. See what I bring next month.
Moving on to item two A, amended site plan approval for one hundred Portsmouth Boulevard Homewood Suites Hotel. David?
The department was made aware by Mike Myers of Procon that they had some minor site-related issues, and after reviewing them onsite with Department of Public Work staff, there are four amendments, each of them we feel is to the city's benefit and to the applicant's benefit, but would like to have you concur in these amendments, and so to favorably recommend them. The first one is the gas main will be coming down on the Dunland Way side. This is a preferable location. All the underground power and utilities will be brought to the site underground now. At one point, that was not going to be possible, but they've indicated that it is. Three, that the street lighting will be similar but not as intense to the entrance of Portsmouth Boulevard, and it'll be running down the length of the road in front of the hotel, which is also preferred location. And four, that they're going to be able to put all the utilities and a final positioning that meets all ordinances. Our recommendation would be that you approve all four amendments as a benefit to the site plan and are really to the city's benefit. He is, but if you ignore him, it won't matter. This is Mike Myers, who was coming down, perhaps you might want to address the board briefly.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and consideration. This was a, you folks have been terrific to us. We're just delighted to be able to come back to you once again. This was some utility changes that both Verizon, PSNH, the Portsmouth Fire Department, and Northern Utilities requested of us to try to put all the utilities underground. We also wanted to, to work with Lucy and David in terms of getting our street lighting so that it resembles everything that has been done on the, from the Market Street into, into the four-way intersection at Osprey and Carmis Way of the same type of light, and we'll put that all underground and move that to the sidewalks side of the street, and hope that you would entertain this proposal.
Any questions for the applicant? No? Thank you. Thank you.
All, yeah, this is not a public hearing. What we'd ask for is that you approve those four amendments and authorize the department to sign off on them, essentially.
Okay. So moved.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And the chair votes aye. Before we go to German, do we have any other housekeeping items?
Actually, to everyone's surprise, no.
No?
Lucy, did you? I think Lucy was raising...
No, I was...
Oh, okay.
No?
We will have something for you at the next meeting, though, which will be pretty comprehensive on the zoning, but that's next meeting.
Okay. Do I hear a motion for German?
So moved.
A meeting next month, promise.
Second.
Oh, we have zoning maps for you all.
Oh, boy.
And we also have legislative, yeah, you've got your books.
Move to adjourn. Good night.